Good evening. Thank you all for joining us this evening. This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Socorro ISD is being held April 21st, 2020. The time is 6:00 PM. This meeting will be held by teleconference. The teleconference audio can be accessed at the following toll-free number: using the access code 149-779-885, and through an audio feed located at Any member of the public wishing to comment on an agenda item can send the comments to the following email address: All backup material for the meeting can be accessed at the following link, which is on sasd.net. On March 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following: Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Number one, although members of the Board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by telephone call and internet access. Number two, we are meeting by use of both telephone conference call, online access, and through use of an email link for questions. Number three, if a member of the public submitted written comments in advance, the Board President or a member of the administration will read the comments into record before or during the Board's consideration of that item. If you would like to provide a comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference or telephone call, please follow instructions on the meeting notice. Number four, all other meeting procedures will adhere to Board adopted procedures to the extent practicable. Number five, an audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. Number six, we apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. Number seven, if you have questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787. And now I will do a roll call of Board members to make sure that we do have a quorum. Ms. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Gueda?
Present.
Mr. Gondeta?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Garcia?
Here.
Mr. Mina?
Here.
And Mr. Morales?
Present.
Thank you, Board members. At this time, technology is going to open everyone's mics, and if you'll please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, which is being led tonight by our CFO, Tony Ressa.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the Constitution, and the Constitution of America. We are a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Ressa. And now we'll move on to item number three, Superintendent's Comments. Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. All right, first, President Nahara, members of the Board, I first like to wish a very happy belated birthday to Trustee Gary Gondeta. His special day was on April 19th. Mr. Gondeta, I hope you enjoyed your great day with your family.
Yes, I did. Thank you.
All right, all right. So President Nahara, members of the Board, as we continue to work as a team to move our school district forward during this pandemic, the word heroes, it just comes to my mind. And even though most of our employees, including teachers, are working from home, everybody's working harder now than ever before. I want to thank our amazing teachers. We continue to look, you know, for ways to protect our CNS employees as well as all of our essential staff. So we thank all of them for their heroic service. You know, our teachers, they continue to find ways to make remote learning fun and stress-free for our parents. And obviously, most importantly, our students. So it takes a lot of work, dedication and effort, but they are our heroes in the classroom. And right now, they continue to, you know, be heroes when their students are at home. Also, we've always emphasized that the need for parental involvement, but parents now have an even bigger role. As you know, they're the ones who are making sure that our students are engaging in remote learning. So we can't thank our parents enough for their heroic service. And lastly, teamwork is why SISD has always been at the top of the charts. I do want to thank our team of eight, our trustees, for approving the recommendations that we made to leave no child behind and also to leave no employee behind during these very challenging times. So we thank our amazing Board of Trustees for their heroic services. Also, I want to thank our awesome employee associations for working side by side with us during this time as well. Thank them for, I want to thank you for their support. And as we continue to make adjustments to our Remote Learning Academy, you know, we'll definitely be ahead of the game if we find ourselves in the same situation at the start of our 2020-2021 school year. We're getting a lot of positive feedback from our parents, from our teachers and students. So let's keep moving forward as a team like we always have in the past. So thank you, everybody, for your heroic teamwork. That concludes my comments. President Nahara?
Dr. Espinoza? We will continue with item number four, Public Hearing. A, Public Hearing on 2020-2021 Hazardous Routes for the Socorro ISD. Ms. Macias?
President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the Board, starting on page six of your Board Book, you will find details of our 2020-2021 hazardous route proposal. On a yearly basis, Administration uses criteria outlined in policy CNA Local and Legal for determining which transportation routes qualify as hazardous for the next school year. Due to the unprecedented health pandemic, Administration recommends no changes to previously approved 2019-2020 hazardous areas. The Socorro Independent School District advertised tonight's regular Board Meeting as a public hearing item in El Diario on Wednesday, April 15th, and in the El Paso Times on Thursday, April 16th. The publications informed the community that public hearing comments could be emailed to board-questions@sisd.net. At this time, there has been no feedback or questions submitted in regards to the hazardous routes public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Macias. Since there are no public comments that we've received by email, we will move on from this item. Ms. Macias, I do understand that we have an email concerning another topic?
Yes, ma'am. We received an email today at 4:57 PM. It's from Araceli Jimenez. She is one of our nurses from Paso del Norte Elementary School, or K8. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. Being that we are in a coronavirus pandemic and a local, state, national, and international crisis, and many of the affected number of cases are on the east side of El Paso and far east of El Paso City County, which serves the SISD community, I wanted to ask if it could be possible to add to the next meeting a question of whether SISD can create a CARES fund similar to what EPISD did for the community to benefit all of El Paso. I was encouraged to see that EPISD has created a CARES fund to support the El Pasoans Fighting Hunger Food Bank, partnering with them to assist needy families with groceries as stated below. El Paso ISD launched EPISD CARES in April to help El Pasoans Fighting Hunger Food Bank in their efforts to feed families impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. The food bank has distributed close to 80,000 boxes of food to nearly 23,000 families in El Paso since the COVID-19 pandemic began impacting the community. Donations will also support the challenge grant established by Hunt Family Foundation, Paul L. Foster Family Foundation, and Mountain Stars Sports Group Foundation, who have agreed to match all donations made to El Pasoans Fighting Hunger up to $1 million. More information can be found here on https://pdnfoundation.org/give to a fund-episdcare. It crossed my mind that perhaps TNSISD can also partner with its local food bank to show solidarity and support for our El Paso region and stakeholders. Please let me know what you think of such an idea. I pray you and yours are well and safe. Thank you kindly, Ms. Araceli Jimenez RN from Paso del Norte School.
Thank you, Ms. Macias. Dr. Espinoza, can we please look into this request?
Yes, ma'am, we sure will, Ms. President Nahara.
We will move on now with item number five, Consent Agenda. I do have one item, E4, that has been requested to be looked at by Mr. Paul Garcia. Are there any other items to be pulled?
Yes, I have another item that I'd like to have pulled as well. It would be under 5B.
President Nahara, I'm not sure I wanted to pull that one. Maybe the other Paul? I don't know.
Okay.
President Nahara, Mr. Gueda?
Yes, sir.
I'll have to pull item 5C.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Morales, which item did you want to pull?
It would be 5B, as in boy.
And just so that I'm clear, we do not need to pull item E4, the MOU from Texas Tech?
President Nahara, this is Tony Ressa, Chief Financial Officer. I'm requesting if we can pull item 4, I'm sorry, DE4 for clarification. We need to clarify something with the Board on that item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ressa. Okay, are there any other items to be pulled? Do I have a motion?
President Nahara, this is Ms. Rodriguez. Can you repeat what has been pulled just for, just to clarify, please?
Yes, ma'am. I have item 5B, 5C, 5E4.
Mrs. Nahara, this is Gary Gondeta.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve changes.
President Nahara, Paul Garcia, second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Gondeta and a second by Mr. Garcia to approve Consent Agenda item with the exception of items 5B, 5C, and 5E4. And I'll now do a roll call, Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Gueda?
Aye.
Mr. Gondeta?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mina?
Aye.
And Mr. Morales?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Our first item is going to be 5B. Mr. Morales?
I just needed clarification as to, I know there was, and the packet had to do with confidentiality. However, I need to, I'm wondering, the question I have is, who are we approving with this employment personnel specifically?
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board. This is Angelica Herrera, Director of Human Resources. I am filling in for Mr. Rudy Campoya since he could not be with us tonight. And just to clarify, Mr. Morales, the Consider For Approval Employment of Personnel, those are people who we have already offered the job. They have been recommended for a position. They are filling and offered the job, and they have signed. So now we have to provide them with a contract.
Okay, the reason why I'm asking is because there's some, there's some other contracts that we're looking at, I'm looking at, and I'm not sure that, I wanted to make sure that they weren't the ones that we were approving.
And that is correct, sir. The other ones that are going to be presented later on today are going to be for the 2020-2021 school year. Those are the ones that, for this agenda item, is for this school year.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Of course.
Mrs. Nahara? This is Gary Gondeta?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Herrera?
Yes, sir.
You're saying these names that we're pulling right now are for this year?
That is correct, sir. Those employees have already been offered a position.
Okay, I don't, I, all right, I kind of don't get this. We're going to hire people this year, but we're basically ended the year already?
Yes, but they are current vacancies that have been filled, either right before the pandemic occurred. Those are recommendations done by our principals or by any of our departments.
This is trustee Morales. I'm just curious to know, who specifically is this personnel? You're saying are these teachers? Are they aides? Are they monitors? I mean, who are we looking at? We're approving something that we don't even know who we're approving. That's my question.
Mr. Morales, in our Board Book on page 25 is a list of the personnel that we are approving right now. They consist of teachers, one nurse, and two counselors. But it's on page 25.
Okay, I see it here. Fair enough. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Do I have a motion?
President Nahara, this is Ms. Rodriguez. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
President, Paul Gueda, let's second it.
Thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Gueda. And Ms. Rodriguez, your vote?
Aye.
Mr. Gueda?
Aye.
Mr. Gondeta?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mina?
Aye.
And Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Okay, we will move on to the next pulled item, which is item 5C. Mr. Gueda?
President, I have a question with Ms. Ressa or Ms. Olson. I wanted to pull this item because I noticed, as I'm looking at the budget amendments, I noticed that the employee travel has been moved, majority from every school. And if they could explain, I'm assuming it's been moved because of COVID-19, and they could just get in detail of why it's been moved for us?
Good evening, Madam President, Board Members. Dr. Espinoza, Susan Olson, Budget Director. The, once it became evident that the student-employee travel would be canceled due to the COVID-19 closure, campuses and department administrators redirected funds to other line items. As you'll see, starting on page 29, most of the amendments were made to purchase technology and supplies. But it was due to the COVID-19 closure and the fact that travel was being canceled.
And that's a great theme, Olson. My other question would be, if we come back to school, say, in a couple of months, and I see fine arts travels, $135,000, and would some of the schools be able to get their money back for travel?
Once they spend it, you'll notice it's like a lot of the amendments were in Title I funds to, you know, it's like supplies and technology. Once they've spent that, they would not be able to travel. With the exception, like you said, you saw that amendment for fine arts, we would be able to provide that money because we basically are going to retrieve it from them. And then if they have to travel, if, once we go back, it's like we would give those, give them those funds back.
Perfect. Thank you so much, ma'am.
You're very welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
President Nahara, this is Ms. Rodriguez. I'd like to second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gueda and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. And now I'll call for the vote. Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Gueda?
Aye.
Mr. Gondeta?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mina?
Aye.
And Mr. Morales?
Aye.
And the motion carries. And our last pulled item is item 5D4. Mr. Ressa?
Yes, President Nahara, Tony Ressa, Chief Financial Officer. I'm going to ask if our purchasing director, Mr. Sam Garcia, can fill in the board of why we're asking for this item to be pulled.
President Nahara, Superintendent Dr. Espinoza, members of the Board. My name is Samuel Garcia, Director of Purchasing. Agenda item 5E4, Memorandum of Understanding with Texas Tech University Health Science Center, El Paso. What we like to do is read for the record that we want to thank Dr. Martin and her team. This contract came to us with a July 1st start date. But Dr. Martin and her team were able to, and were able to make some arrangements so that this contract is available to our district effective May 1st of 2020. We just want to be able to read that for the record to recommend that this contract be approved, effective date, May 1st, 2020. And we do have Dr. Martin available. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, this is Dr. Martin, and I'm here if anyone has any questions. Basically, we wanted to change the date so that we could offer services to children in their homes. Now that we are very, we're very comfortable with telepsych to patients' homes. So because of the COVID-19 crisis, we have adjusted everything so that we can offer this service.
Thank you so much, Ms. Martin. This is an amazing opportunity for our district. And to be able to move the date up to May 1st will certainly be a benefit. Thank you. Are there any?
President, Mr. Mina, motion to approve.
President, President Nahara, Paul Garcia, a second.
I have a motion by Mr. Mina and a second by Mr. Garcia. Ms. Rodriguez, it's your vote.
Aye.
Mr. Gueda?
Aye.
Mr. Gondeta?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mina?
Aye.
And Mr. Morales?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you so much. And we will move on with item 6, New Business. A, Consider Approval of Proclamation for National School Nurse Day, May 6, 2020. Ms. Madrid?
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the Board, and Dr. Espinoza. Thank you. This evening, we're going to have the nurse proclamation read by our high school nurse, Mrs. Vicky Laca, who's retiring this December after 44 years of being in the nursing profession, 30 of those being with SISD. And I'd now like to introduce Ms. Vicky Laca to read our proclamation. Thank you.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board. My name is Victoria Laca, and I am the nurse at Socorro High School. I have been at Socorro High School for the past 30 years. And I am honored to read the proclamation for National School Nurse Day. The theme for 2020 is school nurses supporting students in times of crises. Whereas students are the future, and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow. And whereas families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they are at school. And whereas all students have a right to have their physical and mental health needs safely met while in the school setting. And whereas students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has emphasized the essential role school nurses play in student health and academic success. And whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and in ensuring students' academic success for more than 100 years. And whereas school nurses address the home and community factors, such as social determinants, that impact students' health. And whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children. And whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care when children's cognitive development is at its peak. And whereas school nurses are members of school-based teams, such as school health services, 504, IEP, disaster, emergency planning, to address the school population. And whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day. Therefore, be it resolved that the National Association of School Nurses celebrates and acknowledges the accomplishments of school nurses everywhere and their efforts of meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of healthcare in our schools and offers gratitude for the nation's school nurses who contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy in school and ready to learn, and keeping parents and guardians at work, not just on this National School Nurse Day, but at every opportunity throughout the year. Thank you.
President Nahara, this is Mr. Gueda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gueda.
I'd like to make a motion.
President Nahara, Paul Garcia, a second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gueda and a second by Mr. Garcia. Is there any further discussion?
President Nahara, this is Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes, Ms. Rodriguez.
I would just like to say thank you so much, Ms. Laca, for your years of service to our district and to your profession. And I'd also like to thank Ms. Madrid for everything that she is doing and all our school nurses in this time. I know the work that our medical community is providing to our community and to our students, in this time especially. Again, thank you all so, so very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And now I will call for a vote. Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Gueda?
Aye.
Mr. Gondeta?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mina?
Aye.
And Mr. Morales?
Aye.
And the motion carries. And we do wish an extreme debt of gratitude to all of our nurses who go above and beyond. And again, thank you, Ms. Laca, for your service to SISD.
Thank you.
And carries. And we will move on to item 6B, Consider Approval of Proclamation for School Library Month. Ms. Sparks?
Thank you, Board President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board. My name is Marcy Sparks, and I'm the Library Services Coordinator. This April, the American Association of School Librarians will observe the 35th anniversary of School Library Month. It is celebrated in conjunction with National Library Week on April 19th through the 25th. Every April, school librarians are encouraged to create activities to help their school and local community celebrate the essential role that strong school library programs play celebrate the essential role that strong school library programs play in transforming learning. The 2020 National Library Month theme was originally Find Your Place at the Library. But in light of the emergence of the global pandemic, it has been updated to reflect all the services available remotely by also including the theme Find Your Library at Your Place. It is our intention to acknowledge the importance of school libraries by the Socorro Independent School District through a proclamation read to us by the winners of the 2020 Battle of the Bluebonnets Team from Helen Ball Elementary. It is a pre-recording, and some of the volume is a little wonky, but bear with me. The proclamation is offered, um, by Roxanne DeLeon and Ms. Sanchez, David Hasso II, Aditel Aguirre Mesa, and Leila Mayesi.
The writing school library program is to ensure the students and staff are effective users of the ideas and information. And whereas the school librarian's role is to provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure that the library program is integral part or the instructional program of the school. And the case has entrusted the school librarian in each school to teach the skills of locating and using information through traditional resources and new technologies to provide literature appreciation activities and to guide and encourage content and recreational reading to every student. And whereas lifelong learning begins and is systematically developed through the school library curriculum of elementary and secondary schools. And whereas school libraries provide books to encourage children to read for pleasure. And whereas the school library program contributes to the individual growth and development of all students while fostering both excellence and equity in education. And whereas the school librarians of Socorro Independent School District are determined to work for a quality library program for all students. Whereas school libraries are a fun place for students to go, and all students deserve a well-managed library to provide for free expression and access to ideas. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby proclaim April 2020 a School Library Month in all the public schools and call upon school administrators, teachers, students, and community of Socorro Independent School District to recognize and support this action and the participation throughout the month of April in the celebration of the School Library Month.
President Nahara, Paul Garcia, motion to approve.
President Nahara, Mr. Mena, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Garcia and a second by Mr. Mena. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Sparks, I want to thank you so much, uh, for making the recording for us. Uh, I do so miss having our meetings in person where we get to see and hear our students. And so this was amazing, and thank you so much, uh, Ms. Sparks. Thank you and all of our librarians for everything they do to encourage and engage our students through their libraries. Thank you. And now I will call for a vote. Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Geta?
Aye.
Mr. Gandina?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mena?
Aye.
Mr. Morales?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Again, thank you, Ms. Sparks. We will continue with item 6C. Consider Approval of Additional Administrator Certified and Non-Certified Contract Recommendations uh, for the 2020-2021 school year.
Hi, good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. My name is Nahara Geta, Director of Human Resources, and I am filling in for Mr. Rudy Campoya since he could not be with us tonight. I am here to present to you the additional name of the professional employee who is going to receive their employment contract for the 2020-2021 school year. On your Friday packet, you should have received the name of the certified administrator. The name has been verified by the Department of Human Resources. At this time, administration is recommending your approval of the item as presented.
President Nahara, this is Ms. Rodriguez, motion to approve.
President Nahara, Paul Geta, I'd like to second it.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Geta. Is there any further discussion?
President Nahara, this is here, Gandina?
Yes, sir, Mr. Gandina.
You know, these are our new contracts for this following year, correct, right?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Next year.
For next year. Starting on what day?
It will be July 1st.
July 1st?
Uh-huh, 2020.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I will now call for a vote. Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Geta?
Aye.
Mr. Gandina?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mena?
Aye.
And Mr. Morales?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Item 6D, Consider Approval of Professional Certified Contract Recommendations for the 2020-2021 school year. Ms. Herrera?
Good evening again, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. I am here to present on behalf of Mr. Rudy Campoya to you the list of professional employees who are going to receive their employment contracts for the 2020-2021 school year. On your Friday packet, you should have received the list of certified teachers, librarians, nurses, counselors, and diagnosticians. These lists have been verified by the Department of Human Resources. At this time, administration is recommending for your approval of the item as presented.
President Nahara, this is Mr. Geta. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
President Nahara, this is Mr. Mena. I'd like to second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Geta and a second by Mr. Mena. Is there any further discussion?
President Nahara, this is Paul Garcia. Do you have a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Garcia, go ahead.
Uh, Ms. Herrera, is, are these employees, is it going to affect on July 1st as well?
Yes, that is correct. Their contracts will run from July 1st through June 30th, 2021.
And can you, can you explain a little bit of, so this is going, we're going to be ahead of the game, is my understanding, when it comes to, to hiring employees, right? Or am I seeing it wrong?
Um, so these contracts are actually for employees that are currently with us. So as soon as those employees for any vacancies that we will have for the 2020-2021 school year, then we will send those contracts for your approval.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Ms. Rodriguez, your vote?
Aye.
Mr. Geta?
Aye.
Mr. Gandina?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mena?
Aye.
And Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Okay. We will move on to item 6E. Consider Approval of Resolution Regarding Policy FEC Local for Loss of Credit, Ms. Macias.
President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. You can find the following resolution on page 96 of your board book. Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Socorro Independent School District Regarding Temporary Modification to Local Policy FEC Due to COVID-19. Whereas on March 19, 2020, the Texas Governor issued Executive Order Number GA-08 relating to school closures and COVID-19 preparedness and mitigation through this action in accordance with guidance from the President of the United States ordered the temporary closure of all Texas school districts. Whereas on March 15, 2020, the Superintendent of the Socorro Independent School District declared an immediate and emergency shutdown of the district to protect the health and safety of staff and students. Whereas on March 31st, 2020, the Texas Governor issued Executive Order Number GA-14 further extending school closures until May 1st, 2020, and on April 17th, provided an update extending schools' closures until the end of the 1920 school year due to COVID-19. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Socorro Independent School District has implemented procedures for continuity of instruction to the extent possible during the indefinite district closure. And whereas the board finds that a need exists to temporarily adjust local policy provisions and provide fairness and consistency in addressing student attendance, loss of credit under these unprecedented circumstances. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Socorro Independent School District make the following temporary modification to policy FEC local and guidelines for student loss of credit makeup. Loss of credit LOC waivers will be automatically granted pursuant to the Commissioner's General Waiver Authority under Texas Education Code 7.056 for students who do, who do not meet the minimum attendance requirements of TEC 25.092 for class credit or final grade for a course taken in the current academic period, i.e. the spring semester of the 2019-2020 school year. In addition, because students cannot physically come onto campus and make up academic hours for previously loss of credit incurred, the following provisions will be allowed during the duration of the district closure. Students will be afforded the opportunity to complete loss of credit hours via remote learning through the following academic online platforms. Study Island for High School, IEXCEL for Middle School, and IStation for Elementary School. Furthermore, students without access to technology will be afforded an academic packet providing an equal opportunity to complete LOC hours. Attendance LOC guidelines shall be communicated in a timely manner to all district stakeholders. The authority granted by this resolution to temporarily adjust LOC policy FEC indicated in this resolution and as extended and clarified in District Resolution Guidelines shall be limited to and apply only for the 2019-2020 school year unless the board takes further action. At this time, I would recommend the resolution approved as read.
President Nahara, Mr. Mena, motion to approve.
President Nahara, Paul Geta, would like to second that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Mena and a second by Mr. Geta. Is there any further discussion?
President Nahara, Paul Garcia, I do have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Garcia.
Um, Ms. Macias, how are you all going to communicate with the parents in rolling, uh, this resolution out?
Yes, I have Mr. Corey Craft here with me on this call. Mr. Corey Craft, could you share those details?
Be happy to. President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Our administrators at the school will be contacting those students and parents directly to make sure they understand the opportunities available for them if their student has pending loss of credit. Uh, we will be following up with them to make sure this is adequately taken care of as we know the semester is quickly coming to an end.
Thank you, sir. Will these students be allowed to receive their diploma for the high school students?
If they successfully complete all the requirements, uh, including LOC, then they would.
Do you, uh, sir, do you have a deadline as to when these students need to complete the loss of credit?
Yes, and we will be, uh, rolling that out in written form, uh, to the parents and students as well. Um, and we, uh, we also understand that the importance of following up because as we know, uh, a lot of our students, um, sometimes will procrastinate, and we give them a lot of, uh, friendly follow-up and encouragement.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? And I have a motion by Mr. Mena and a second by Mr. Geta. And I'll now call for the vote. Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Geta?
Aye.
Mr. Gandina?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mena?
Aye.
And Mr. Morales?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Macias and Mr. Craft. We will now move to item 6F. Consider Approval of Proposed 2020-2021 Hazardous Routes for School for Socorro ISD. Ms. Macias?
President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Administration recommends the approval of the proposed hazardous routes. Definition, it's on page 8 of your board book as follows. By definition, a hazardous condition or route exists where no walkway is provided. Two, an area is designated as presenting a high risk of violence. Three, student must walk along or cross A, a freeway or expressway. B, an uncontrolled major traffic artery. C, an underpass and overpass or a bridge. D, an industrial or commercial area. Or E, another comparable condition. For example, majority of area under construction, a flood zone, hazardous railroad crossing, city of Socorro resolution, and electrical easement. Administration also recommends all 2019-2020 hazardous routes to carry over for the 2020-21 school year. At this time, administration is not recommending any changes to previously approved hazardous routes and proposes the hazardous routes list to continue service per Texas Education Code 42.155D and for the 2020-21 school year. All details can be found in pages 9 through 15 of your board book. Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Macias.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mena, go ahead.
You, for America's High School feeder pattern, you have, uh, three buses with the Blue 375, and it says here must cross freeway. That's, is that one of the hazardous routes?
Yes, sir. By approving the definition, which is the expressway, that allows us to provide transportation services for those areas. By TEA, since it's within two miles, we do not qualify. But by approving these hazardous routes and the definition, we're able to submit for reimbursement to TEA.
Thank you, Ms. Macias.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Rodriguez, did you have a comment?
No, ma'am. I just wanted to make a motion to approve.
I have a
And I'll, I'll do a second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Mena. Is there any further discussion? And I'll call for the vote now. Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Geta?
Aye.
Mr. Gandina?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mena?
Aye.
And Mr. Morales?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Macias.
Thank you so much.
Item 6G, Consider Approval of Deceleration Lane in Front of the Ed Center on Eastlake Boulevard. Mr. Eington? Is Mr. Eington with us?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, I got you.
Okay, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza's member of the board, Tom Eington, Chief Operation Officer. We brought this, uh, decel lane to you a month or so ago. And basically, what it has to do is with the widening of Eastlake Boulevard and all the commercial development surrounding our ed center. Uh, the County of El Paso approached SISD with a proposal of providing a decel lane in off of Eastlake Boulevard to provide access to the development in that area. Uh, we wanted, SISD wanted to make sure that that decel lane will also serve the ed center, the northern access on the, uh, to our property. And we feel like that this access will be beneficial to our employees who work at the ed center as far as getting into the ed center and then as far as leaving the ed center. We can, um, well, that Mr. Blanco, legal counsel, is on, is listening. We can either approach it as an easement, or we can do a dedication. I have been meeting with the county on the Joe Battle extension that has to do with SAC. Uh, this would not cost the district anything. They would uh build a decel lane and provide us access into their property. So I'm asking for consideration of decel.
This is Nahara, this is Gary Gondara.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gondara.
Mr. Eington, this, the lane is, is it, it's in our property, Mr. Eington?
Yeah, if you go to, put on page one oh one, you can see it's a ten-foot wide strip, the length of our property on Eastlake, approximately three hundred and thirty-two point four eight feet. That's the dedication or the easement that we would have to uh provide to the county in order for that. The decel lane will extend further up from that point, but it's only affects us in that ten-foot strip in front of the Ed Center.
Okay, so it's right in front, it's ten feet, and it's just to um stretch out the road a little bit more for a turning lane, if I'm correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
President Nahara, this is Mr. Guerra.
Yes, sir, Mr. Guerra.
Mr. Eington, I, I believe it's a great idea, but you mentioned on the deceleration, you mentioned either an eastman or a, what was the other term?
Or we can dedicate it to the county.
I'd rather give it an eastman instead of a dedication to the county. The eastman, we would still own it, correct?
Mr. Blanco can refer.
Yeah, that, sure, that, this is uh Steve Blanco, legal counsel for the district. Um, Mr. Guerra, yes, that's, that's an option. There's really two ways to handle this, and I don't know which way the county would prefer, although I have a a basic guess. I think they're gonna want it to be dedicated simply so that they will control it, be able to access it, um, repair it when necessary, um, and be able to use it. That would be a transfer of title, obviously, of that strip of land from the school district to the county. It can be done at, at no cost. We don't have to charge the county anything for that because they're another public entity that has the power of eminent domain, and you're allowed to do that. And the question that we had at the last time we discussed this was, did the Board want to require some form of consideration from the county? If we're going to dedicate, dedicate it to them or if they'll accept it through an easement, do you want them to pay fair market value for that strip of land, which would require us to go out and get a, a survey and appraisal, which has some expenses associated with it? Or try to use the granting or the dedication of that easement to the county in connection with this other work on Joe Battle that is being worked on with the SAC and just allow Mr. Eington to go back and negotiate with the county and try to reach um some agreement that he can bring back to the Board and then you all would approve. We just really need some guidance from the Board on which way you prefer to do it. Just not write dedication, um, offer an easement, or have him negotiate over some concession with the Joe Battle property.
President Nahara, just a question. Would we still be paying, if we made it an easement, uh, obviously, if we dedicated, we wouldn't pay any property taxes on that piece of land, but if we made it into an easement, will we, would, would still be paying property taxes on it?
No, not if we grant it over to the county directly. You would not. And my guess is that they're gonna want it dedicated, and there, there are some benefits to dedicating it to them as well. They've become completely responsible for it, uh, and we don't have to deal with it again in the future.
Mr. Nahara, this is Gary Gondara.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gondara.
I mean, again, and the best benefit, it would be, uh, to dedicate it because then we um don't have to maintain it, if I'm correct, right?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, but we can't put a stipulation on it, right? If we want?
Well, that's what we don't, we wanna know if the Board is interested in allowing Mr. Eington to go and negotiate over that.
Well, I'm interested in dedicating because it, it takes it out of our hands and we don't have to maintain it. It's ten foot. My only issue is that if we're gonna have a, it's gonna be a turning lane, then they call it the Craig Patton Turning Lane. I might get something dedicated to Mr. Patton, all right?
Ms. Nahara, this is Mr. Morales.
Yes, sir, Mr. Morales.
Quick question. Why, um, would, wouldn't the county take responsibility of maintaining that Boulevard anyway for the fact that they've got to take care of the rest of the Boulevard uh adjacent to it? So in, 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 I, I personally would think that talking to them, going back and negotiating that uh, that property we have out there at the SAC would be advantageous to us to at least see what they have to offer. As far as a trade or whatever the proper terminology uh is needed.
That is, that is the uh negotiation that I am having with the county. Because of the uh Joe Battle would extend over the sixty acres that we purchased, and there would be some cost involved in, in that, so that's what I'm working with the county to uh negotiate something on the cost of Joe Battle.
This is Mr. Morales again. I think that's a way to look at it. It gives us another option. It gives us an opportunity to look, to see, because eventually we're gonna need that area to help us with our second, uh, SAC two.
We, we already purchased that area, yeah, we, we got it. We just, we just need the extension of Joe Battle sooner or later.
Well, that's, that's exactly what I'm saying. Isn't that something that you should negotiate prior to us making a decision on this easement?
Well, I've been in negotiation with them and, and, and talked to them about the extension of Joe Battle, and they're, they're willing to work with us on that. I mean, yeah, Joe, Bob Hope.
Well, this is, um, go ahead. Board President Nahara, this is Steve Blanco again. Um, I, I think what the Board, to Mr. Morales's point, would, would need would be some idea of what the county is willing to do on the Joe Battle extension. If we grant them the exchange or dedicate this turning lane to them, I, Tom, I don't know if you have any concrete numbers from them of what they're willing to do, but if we're going to prepare a dedication document, we can make that a condition in it.
No, we hadn't, we hadn't discussed anything other than, you know, that we would not be having to pay for any extension of hope. Just verbalizing it, nothing documented.
Well, once again, I would think that we would need to get something in writing to protect ourselves as far as a, uh, you know, good old boy agreement, because as we well know, those are not always what they turn out to be.
And, Mr. Eington, it is my understanding, uh, is this item to be approved by the Board for you to enter into talks with the county? Or is this just approving the deceleration lane?
No. To enter into more discussion, you know, whether you wanna go dedication or easement.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Steve Blanco again. I would, I would recommend to you authorize Mr. Eington to approach the county and advise them that the district is willing to dedicate the property and then have some formal discussion and concrete proposal from the county on what they'll do with respect to Joe Battle if we do that. And then the Board can make a final decision on explaining what the county wants to do.
Ms. Nahara, this is Mr. Mena. I agree, Mr. Blanco. I think we should do that.
Mrs. Nahara, this is Mr. Morales. I believe that's the way we should go as well.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Mena and a second by Mr. Morales. Is there any further discussion?
I'm still, uh, agreeing on calling it the Craig and Patton Turning Lane.
I'm sure Mr. Eington will keep that in mind.
I'll keep that in mind.
And now I'll call for a vote. Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Guerra?
Aye.
Mr. Gondeta?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mena?
Aye.
Mr. Morales?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Eington. And item six H, consider approval of fee proposal for C E A Group to provide professional services for the sports lighting at Eastlake High School and sports lighting field and modification at Pebble Hills High School. Mr. Eington?
Yes, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the Board, back on March the twenty-fourth, uh, we brought the uh C E A Group as a recommendation for administration to uh negotiate with them on a fee proposal to do the modifications at Eastlake and Pebble Hills along with the modifications of the baseball field. We have since met with them and followed our procedures that we have in place and has come back with a, a procedure, uh, negotiated lump sum fee in the amount of eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars for the sports lighting at Eastlake High School and the sports lighting and field modification at Pebble Hills. This is a part of the two thousand and seventeen uh bond program. These are the last two hills that uh do not have their sports lighting um started on. By approving this tonight, you know, we can execute a contract and we can begin design work uh immediately on this project and, and get as much done since we're considering uh construction and as much done without students on the campus. Administration recommends approval of C E A Group uh for the uh sports lighting for Eastlake High School and the field modification and sports lighting at Pebble Hills High School as presented.
President Nahara, this is Mr. Guerra. Would like to make a motion.
President Nahara, oh, Garcia, like to second that?
I have a motion by Mr. Guerra and a second by Mr. Garcia. Is there any further discussion? And now I'll call for the vote. Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Guerra?
Aye.
Mr. Gondeta?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mena?
Aye.
Mr. Morales?
Aye.
And the motion carries. And item six I, discussion and possible action regarding Mexican-American School Board Association membership, membership. Uh, Board members, I received an email a couple of weeks ago from Jamie Matthews. Uh, I'll read it now. Students from your district have applied for our annual Masba scholarship, which we award only to the graduating seniors of Masba member districts. We've committed ourselves to awarding two hundred and twenty scholarships in twenty twenty, three of which have been designated for your district should you renew your Masba membership by May first. Membership will allow your team of eight free access to all of our events, including our annual Equity Symposium, our tour of practice best practices, and Masba Conference. It will also allow us to share these three scholarships with seniors from your district. Um, Board members, in the past, I mean, we have always been a member of Masba. Uh, last year was the first year that they uh started the scholarships. Uh, two of our uh students received scholarships last year in an amount of two hundred and fifty dollars each. Uh, as long as I've been on the Board, we have not attended the Masba Conference. It is, it generally falls at an uh inopportune time to attend, but there is a possibility if a more member wanted to attend, they could. Our Masba uh membership is fifteen hundred dollars a year, and so we need to decide as a Board if we want to approve membership for another year.
President Nahara, this is Mr. Mena. So we have three scholarship, they're gonna give us three scholarships at two hundred and fifty apiece?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So at seven hundred and fifty dollars and the membership is fifteen hundred dollars?
Yes, sir.
So if we don't do the membership, our children, our students won't get the scholarships, then?
That is correct, Mr. Mena. They, they only give the scholarships to districts who are members of Masba.
Hmm, thank you.
President Nahara, Paul Garcia.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, are there any other perks uh to being a part of this organization?
Uh, Mr. Garcia, you know, like I said, they offer an annual Equity Symposium and their Masba Conference. Uh, like I said, we've never attended those conferences or those meetings. And so, other than that, I am not aware of a benefit to our district. Uh, if another Board member knows more information, please let us know.
President Nahara, this is Mr. Guerra.
Yes, sir, Mr. Guerra.
Yes, the Masba, the Mexican-American School Board Association, unfortunately also as well, uh, they're generally held in February, maybe late January due to work. I have not attended any of those meetings for the past ten years, unfortunately, but being that, that, that their yearly conference is only, they charge fifteen hundred dollars for one year. Um, and I'm, and I know for a fact that the last several Board members of us couldn't make it due to work in our schedule, but I, I believe that we tried again for another year. Maybe the new Board members would like to attend these classes, because now when we, when we go to these classes, the classes are free. They don't charge us for the classes. It's fifteen hundred dollars, what we, we pay for obviously is the flight and hotel. You know, for, for Tasby, obviously, we pay quite a bit amount of money, things like fifty-one thousand dollars, but obviously Tasby does give us bang for the buck. But I believe what we're talking about Masba here, where ninety-five percent of our students are Hispanic, and I believe we should still stay in this conference where we have Isleta ISD, uh, EP ISD, Penalti ISD, uh, Saneli, and I believe that we stay in this conference and this Masba for one more year. Let's give it a try and let's see if anybody can attend come January, February, because to see if these classes, maybe they could get some better knowledge from these classes. These classes actually are free. Are we going for just a room and board and a flight?
President Nahara?
Yes, sir, Mr. Gondeta.
Well, Paul Garcia, motion to approve. Second, this is Mr. Gondara.
I have a motion by Mr. Garcia and a second by Mr. Gondeta. Is there any further discussion? I'll call for a vote. Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Guerra?
Aye.
Mr. Gondeta?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mena?
Aye.
Mr. Morales?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Uh, Board members, there is an item seven executive session on our agenda, but with the fact that we haven't pulled anything to be discussed in executive, uh, Mr. Blanco has advised me that we do not have to go to executive. Is it correct, Mr. Blanco?
Um, yes, Board President Nahara, that's correct. There's no further business on the agenda, and if, if the Board is prepared to do so, you can adjourn the meeting.
This is uh, this is Mr. Morales. There was a couple of those, that's the question that I had. There were a couple of things there that I wasn't sure about. Uh, they were solo uh entries, uh, as far as a term contract, and also another one having to do with a probationary for, uh, and I don't know how, we can say this publicly because I know it's confidential, and I, I had questions on it. I just couldn't figure out where we would be able to discuss it. Apparently, uh, you know, because of, uh, because of confidentiality. So I, I'm not sure of how or what. It, it shouldn't take very long, but I'm just wanting to know if we could at least, at least uh discuss uh why uh there's uh probation. there is, uh, probationary and also another one having to do with a term. It looks, uh, it looks a little, uh, I obviously have a question on it.
Uh, this is, uh, Steve Blanco, Mr. Morales, um, which item was that on?
Uh, it had to do with, uh, certified administration administrator one, and the other one had to do with probationary fourth-year contract. Uh, they were, they were, they were pulled, uh, separately from the rest of the, the other packets, uh, with teachers, other certified contracts, which I believe we pulled, uh, and, or we pulled one of the two, and we approved that, and then we also have the teachers' term contracts. So that's.
So, um, maybe this will help.
These are two that are solo packets, or solo that were, and, and, and obviously there's the names that are, uh, on these, and just, you know, the questions we had were, you know, why were these separated from the rest? And I know it's confidentiality, so there's, wasn't a way for me to, to, to ask about this.
Are you talking about, are you talking about specific individuals where you would have to name? Are you talking about the process used?
No, no.
Of contracts?
Specific individuals, uh, names, and, um, obviously we can't discuss those in public.
Yeah, the, uh, the general, the general way that contract approvals work under Socorro's school policy is under, um, policy DC, the local and the legal policy. Under DC, um, the superintendent has sole authority to make recommendations regarding the hiring and termination of certain levels of staff. Um, you don't get into board direction and approval until you reach a certain level. Those are the ones that the superintendent brings to you in the closed sessions at the meetings for principals, um, director-level positions, and there's a process in DC local that the board and the administration follows to consider those recommendations. For all other contractual and non-contractual staff, the superintendent has sole authority regarding the hiring of those. The board, however, because of the issuance of contracts, has a legal obligation to approve all those contracts. So the administration packages them up in a big group and says, okay, um, these are all the new contracts that we're letting out for the next school year. Generally speaking, it's everybody that you have on your staff the prior school year, with the exception of those who are resigned or were terminated by prior action by the board for some reason. Those are all taken as a group, and the board action to approve those is for the issuance of the contracts. And the board doesn't generally get into discussion or approval regarding the issuance of a teacher's probationary contract, the teacher's term contract, the change of a contract from term to probationary, um, unless that's appealed by a teacher for some reason. In a grievance proceeding or administrative appeal through TEA. And I don't know if that helps explain the process, but it's, if, if, um, there's some particular action that the board voted on and approved, you would wanna have discussed in a closed session. We can certainly put it on an agenda item and to walk through that process for you. Uh, but it's done in this way because of the policy requirements.
Mr. Blanco, I'm, I'm very well aware of the policy because of, of the experience we gained in these last, uh, eight months, or I'm, I should, I should say 11 months now. Uh, however, this is pertaining to a certified administrator. Uh, and I believe that we, as a board, have to approve administrators', uh, contracts.
You, certain levels, yes, to certain levels you do, that's correct.
Okay, so this has to do with an individual that is a certified administrator, solo name, and wanted to know why it's pulled out by itself, solo, from the rest of the, the rest of the pack? So that's, that's the question, uh, that, that's the, the item that, uh, that, uh, that's in question here.
Is that under the new business end 6C?
Well, I wasn't sure, we, we, what was brought up, it didn't seem like it said, says certified administrator. And for the fact that it's confidential, uh, you know, I wa- I wasn't about to mention any, anything more than what I did. Hoping that we would talk, hoping that we could discuss it. Usually we, we have a, a, uh, the last meetings that we've had, we've gone into, uh, executive session. Uh, unlike today, we're looking at making an exception not to have it, where I don't know if it would take more than two or three minutes to discuss it. I, I don't know how the other board members feel about it, but I just, you know, would, it, it's something that I, I saw as we were going through the packet, uh, uh, throughout the week, you know, throughout the weekend. Anyhow, your call on that one.
Yeah, no, no, that's up to the board. I mean, if you have a specific question, if it pertains to a specific individual as opposed to the group, as I mentioned, then yes, that's appropriate to move it into closed session. You would just need a motion to discuss that issue, and it would be 6C, considering approval of additional administrator certified and non-certified contracts with respect to a specific individual that you want to discuss in closed session. That would be appropriate, the board can move into closed session at this time. I think we have that set up, we'll move.
Well, I would like, I would, at this time, I would like to make a motion that we do that.
President Nakadah, Paul Garcia, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Morales and a second by Mr. Garcia to move this item to executive session. Is there any further discussion? And I'll call for a vote, Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Well, one, before, before you vote, we need to make sure that we read out the section. It's section 551.074, um, of the Open Meetings Act that you're moving into closed session under.
And only that section?
In 551.071, in the event, I have to give advice, but yes, those two.
Okay. Do I read this as part of the motion, Mr. Blanco?
No, we've just gotta get it on the record, that's the reason why we moved it into closed session.
Uh, Mr. Guerra?
Aye.
Mr. Gondora?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Minna?
Aye.
Mr. Morales?
Aye.
And the motion carries. We will now move to item seven executive session. The meeting is to be closed for consultation with legal counsel to discuss personnel and real estate matters under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074. And the time is 7:17. And board members, that you'll now leave this regular, uh, teleconference and move to the Zoom executive session. We are now back in regular session, the time is 8 o'clock. There was no action taken during executive, and so if there's business before this board, we will adjourn. Then the time is 8 o'clock.